Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes for the regular meeting on March 29th, 2019. Mr. Merrill, I know you had a revision to those minutes.
Yes, under the miscellaneous number nine. Just to clarify, the question I asked, Mr. Jeroski, I wasn't asking about a meeting day regarding class recycling collection. I was asking about the collection date for recycling being dropped off by PRC. I did send the details to Mr. Lauer to incorporate. So with that change, I want to accept it with that change.
Second. Motion in the second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. Six zero, Mr. Lauer. Next we'll move on to special reports, of which there are none. Next we'll move on to audience comments. This is a section of the meeting where any member of the audience may speak for up to five minutes on a non-agenda item. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to speak? Good evening, Ms. Chaner.
Hi. Ann Chaner, 123 Robin Hood Lane, McMurray. Sorry, I couldn't make the last meeting. I was sick with a bad cold. But I'm here tonight because I understand a public hearing has been set for April 29th, correct, at the middle school, and from 7:30 to 10:00?
7:30 till whenever.
Whenever. Okay, all right. You all hear that now, so be there or be square. Now, I also heard this. Now, this may be a rumor, but in my county political circles, I have heard that North Durban, a developer is planning to put in a big water park. Does anybody know anything about that? You do?
Well, we were invited to a meeting about something like that. I don't know if anyone attended. I was not able to attend. But I heard there's a developer planning to do something on West Chilwell.
My understanding, it's a commercial indoor water park. That's my understanding.
Okay, because I was just wondering if you don't know anything about that. I'll do my best to find out as much as I can to see how much that would interfere with anything we want to do. Because as I said, I'm neutral on the pool thing. Okay. So, and I want you to know too, that I probably, I have done this in the past. I've gone to actually every residence in this township, except for maybe a few. But I plan to put a flyer about the public meeting, okay, so everybody knows. Because if they don't show, then you guys better come up with a consensus, okay? Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience who wishes to speak on a non-agenda item? Seeing no one, we'll move on to unfinished business, of which there is none. So we'll move on to new business. First item is departure from the required qualifications for hiring of a full-time police officer.
Our job description for a full-time police officer requires, has an educational requirement that requires either a bachelor or an associate's degree. We have a part-time officer working for us who is uniquely qualified, and we'd like to be able to take advantage of his abilities. He's a 20-year, has 20 years of service in the Pennsylvania State Police. He also is uniquely qualified in that he serves as a trainer for the records management system that we use. And where I still believe that, in general, our educational requirement makes sense. In this particular case, both the chief and I think that we should waive that educational requirement, so as to afford us the opportunity to appoint Officer Johnston as a full-time officer.
Paul, this is the second time we've done this. I wonder if we should just be modifying the job description such that it allows for somebody who's worked part-time in our police department with so many years' experience to qualify for the full-time position?
I wouldn't have any problem if the modifier is that it's a part-time officer who's worked within our department. I would not want to rely upon service in another department as a way not to have the educational requirement.
Yeah, I think it needs to be a certain duration of time, two, three years, whatever, with an average number of hours per week. I think we get there.
Okay. Well, you know what? We can bring that back as an amendment, but in the meantime, if we could get this paper, we could get Mr. Johnston on it.
I would agree with Mr. Steigl. My concern was that we're making these modifications on an individual basis. And while I certainly support Officer Johnston being promoted because he does bring a very unique set of qualifications, my concern is that if we don't establish a standard, I don't want this to become an issue or a point of negotiation that is spread across other groups. And I agree that, Mr. Steigl, we need to maybe relook at the whole job description. But I'd like to make a motion that we, in this particular individual case, waive the educational requirements for a full-time police officer to facilitate the promotion of Officer Johnston. Go ahead, for full-time, part-time to full-time.
Have a motion in the second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. Six zero, Mr. Lauer. Next item is award of a bid for replacement of the Peters Township Library Root.
In the 2019 Peters Township budget, there's an appropriation of $125,000 for the purpose of replacing the root. We took bids on March 22nd. The bid tabulation is shown on the screen. It's our recommendation that the base bid and alternate bid be awarded to ramp construction for the amount of $95,900.
So move. A motion in the second. Any further discussion?
All right, just one question, please. In the body of the narrative, we refer to the idea we might need additional sheathing. Are you anticipating coming back for a change order if that happens, or?
There's a unit price, and we would apply the unit price.
Okay. Thank you very much. That's all I needed to know.
Have a motion in the second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. Six zero, Mr. Lauer. Next item is award of a bid for the 2019 road repaving program.
The 2019 budget contains an appropriation of $1,525,000 for the road maintenance program. We envisioned of that, $1,400,000 be allocated to the paving program. It's my recommendation that we award the base bid to Young Blood Paving for $1,482,354. While that exceeds the amount that was generally allocated for this, what I'm going to propose is that we not do the paving of the public works yard. There is an additional appropriation that was in the budget for that, and that we concentrate on the roads. And talking with Mr. Zomatis, it's his opinion that we can delay that project one year without severely impacting what the condition of that parking lot is.
I'd make a motion, we award the paving to Young Blood Paving in the base bid amount of $1,000, $1,482,354.
Second. Motion in the second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. Six zero, Mr. Lauer. Next item is award of a bid for the refurbishment of stormwater management ponds.
The 2019 budget has an appropriation of $50,000 for this purpose. We opened bids on April 1st. The bid tabulation is provided there. It's our recommendation that the base bid and the alternate bid be awarded to LM&amp;R Excavating for an amount of $43,400. We worked with this contractor last year, and he completed that project successfully.
So move. Have a motion in the second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. Six zero, Mr. Lauer. Next item is approval of the Crossgates Plan Number 11A subdivision consolidation plan, as shown on drawings prepared by PVE dated February 25th, 2019, for Joshua and Melissa Stein.
So this is a piece of property that can be, well, has legal access off of Palopetts Drive. You would actually go under the railroad bridge and up onto the property. Where that's possible, it's not desirable. The fire department has real concern that they can't access that site from that location with their trucks. So what is being proposed is a subdivision where a small, on Bremen, a small portion of property will be joined on to that larger portion, and it will be, there'll be small additions added in similar amounts to existing lots. This will provide driveway access up above onto that, onto that property from up here. So we think this is actually a desirable solution to this situation. Our understanding is what's going to be constructed is a single home.
As I say, this is not going to be subdivided again.
Well, and I don't know this, because there is some possibility that this road could be extended. In fact, when you looked at this, the idea was that this would connect down here. So I think in theory, that's possible. This is really a tough piece of property.
It's very steep.
Yes. And so I find that, all things are possible. Thinking it could be great, but I find it hard to believe that that's going to happen.
Is there a little driveway going to be?
It is, oh.
I want to see that. I want to see.
It's right, correct me if I'm wrong.
Over to the right.
Right here. Yeah, right here.
Okay, so it's going to go on the side.
It connects back onto this cul-de-sac.
So there is actually a cul-de-sac at the end, so that as far as access for other vehicles. And if we approve this, will that eliminate the possibility of them dropping another driveway down to Palopetts for private use or personal use?
I don't think so, because I don't think it extinguishes the right-of-access from Palopetts Drive.
But that would be a private drive, and it would not be
Yes.
maintainable by the town.
It would be a private drive passed here.
Piggybacking what we discussed last meeting about the right-of-ways and the dedications, do we have, do we own the right-of-way at the end of that cul-de-sac to the end?
I think it's very questionable. It's been, it's been over 21 years, and you know, this portion, you can see where the road is here.
Right.
We haven't done anything with this. This small section here actually reverted back to the property in question right now. So I think it's questionable whether that still exists.
All will move heads to, we approve the Crossgates Plan Number 11A subdivision consolidation plan, as shown on drawings prepared by PVE dated February 25th, 2019, for Joshua and Melissa Stein.
Have a motion in the second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay.
Nay.
Five one, Mr. Lauer. Next item is request from Woodlands of Peters Township Homeowners' Association to transfer our ownership of the stormwater retention pond to Peters Township.
So we received a letter that's in your docket requesting consideration to have the township take over two ponds that are located in the Woodlands and transfer the ownership of those to the township. Much like the discussion on Mallard Lane, before we spend any time and energy looking at this, I think the threshold question is, you know, does council want to entertain taking over ponds that are currently being maintained by homeowners associations? The two ponds are actually in pretty good shape. I realize that these are a little bit, these pictures aren't necessarily indicative, but it's out there exactly right now. But the pond that's further in has actually just recently been maintained by the homeowners association. And my guess is that may be part of the motivation for wanting the township to take those over, so they don't have to bear that expense going forward. I don't know whether anybody here is from the homeowners association. They had indicated that maybe somebody was going to stop down.
Paul, there's a list in here of 30 plans that they have their own detention ponds and their own lands. We didn't.
Those are all ponds that are being maintained currently by homeowners associations. Well, and I take that back, they're ponds and other types of stormwater management facilities. Yeah, so they could have, they could be detention ponds, retention ponds, or they could be tanks.
There's no tanks in there. It's all ponds.
Do you know how many the township currently maintains? I mean, I know you don't do them all every year, but what is the total that the township maintains?
We own roughly 60 ponds right now.
And those were the, we, there came a time when we stopped taking them, right? If I remember correctly?
No, we have been inconsistent on this, and I will tell you, from the standpoint of Mark, and Ed, and myself, we believe these ponds are better served being in public ownership. But having said that, if you decide to take these ponds, these ponds over, be prepared to have other people request that.
Well, that's going to be my next question. How do we, well, you know, if we're going to start doing this, there has to be some rational basis by which we accept, you know, some criteria. Otherwise, we, I don't see how we can justify to taxpayers that live in one, in one neighborhood that know, we're not going to take yours, but we took this out.
We should not take over any ponds, retention ponds, water, ponds that have water in them. Those we should not be taking over. And I think that that's clearly different than a detention pond. But the detention ponds, I don't know, you know, the fact of the matter is, when you look at these ponds, and we were talking, Mark and I were talking about this today, they're located in these plans, and they exist because of the development that occurred there. But the fact of the matter is, who they provide protection for are downstream property owners. They don't necessarily provide protection for people in this plan, but rather the people who live down below this plan.
If I could make a comment or two, first of all, many of you probably know I live in that plan, actually beside one of those. My question was, how do we determine why we take them or we don't take them? Because as Mr. Cozer alluded to, it's a little bit of a disparate application. We're continuing to take new ponds on in different, new developments, while we have others that are not being, that weren't picked up for whatever reason, and I don't know what that was. So I think that's a concern, and that I do think the idea that if, in fact, the township wants to be responsible, or has to maintain the standard, we should think about whether they take them or not. And that's why I'm wondering what the criteria would be to be able to systematically either assume these, or stop taking the other ones on and manage it differently. But establish a criteria that's the same.
I could tell you, from a staff standpoint, it's, and this was true when Mr. Sylvester was here, it was always the belief that these ponds should be in public ownership. Because even when the homeowners association has assigned responsibility for maintaining them, we have responsibility for their maintenance.
Sure.
And it isn't just, normally just sending a letter to people saying, you need to maintain your pond. Normally, there's pushback, because there can be expense to doing this work, as you'll see later, I mean, as you would see in the bid that we just awarded. So.
It seems like we have the roads, or we have to bring the roads up to a public standard. And then the board decides to accept that roadway, and they meet the, whatever, the width, the depth, the actual materials. Perhaps Mark could draft something that, because then the HOA would have to put it in a position where the township then could accept it, versus giving the township one in district fair.
And I don't disagree with that, but I guess that begs the question of when this development was developed, or any of the others listed were developed? Weren't they developed to the criteria that the township wanted?
Well, they were.
With their maintenance obligations.
Right, I understand that.
But they were, and, you know, and the nature of these ponds is that they take water in at times, sediment drops out, and then what you end up with is that sediment, and whatever growth has occurred there, needs to be removed. And when, you know, that doesn't happen every year, but it happens over time.
So what was your comment about detention versus retention?
Well, a detention pond is what you see here. It takes in water, it detains it, and discharges it. A retention pond is what, a pond. It's something, it's a lake.
It's like what's in front of the rec center on.
Right.
Yes.
So your comment was?
We should not be taking those over. I think you're taking on another liability with regard to the safety of people.
I would agree with that. I would agree with that.
I have a couple of questions. One, do we routinely inspect these to make sure that they're being done?
We do.
Yes.
Okay. And two, I know that we have ultimate responsibility, but what happens if we have to go in and do it? Do we lean every owner's property in that association?
I don't think we can, because the pond is owned by the association. It's not owned by the neighborhood.
So we would only?
You could lean the pond.
You could.
Take the pond.
Well, you could assess the association. See, the problem I have is spending other taxpayers' money to maintain something that isn't the township's responsibility now.
And it comes back to the same argument with roadways. You know, we spend taxpayers' money to fix, we spend all taxpayers' money to fix a roadway in someone's neighborhood.
And everybody in the 30 individuals.
Yeah, but those are public roadways.
Right, you could take these, but I mean, these are.
These aren't public, and now you're making, it's like taking over a private road. You're making, you know, the argument always is on the public road, is that, well, you know, I'm a taxpayer, just like the guy that lives on, you know, on a public road, and I'm on a private road. You should take, maintain my road. But, you know, the bottom line is, though, is that that's private. That's not for us to pay. You know, we don't pay for the crossroads parking lot, and they're taxpayers. That's my, that's what I'm trying to say, is that I don't think that you should take public funds and pay for something that's not our responsibility. And I understand that ultimately, that, you know, burden is on us. But if we're inspecting them routinely, there's only 30 of them, then that shouldn't be a problem.
But you've just created a situation where the 30, the people in those 30 plans are paying twice, because they're paying homeowner fees for that, and then we're paying to get everybody else's ponds taken care of. So I could flip your argument and say, you know, people in those plans have an argument against, why should I pay twice? I'm paying for my own pond. Why do I have to pay for everyone else's pond?
Well, and the other thing, too, is, I mean, these ponds, as Mr. Lauer said, they don't just benefit the people that live in the neighborhood, they benefit the people downstream.
I agree. I agree. I understand.
So it's more, it's actually more of a public use than a private road, I mean.
I have no feeling, I should do what you want. I'm just, I don't agree with that. So I'm going to vote whatever I need to vote. I don't think it's going to make any difference.
Well, at this point, we're just authorizing you to move forward with the agreement.
Well, what you're authorizing us to do, and it won't take much, we want to go out and take a look at those ponds, make a determination whether anything needs to be done in terms of improvements. And I would not recommend taking over any pond or road that isn't up to township standards. And so my guess is that one pond, given it was just cleared a couple of years ago, probably is in pretty good shape. I don't know what the condition is to the other pond.
These ones that we maintain, how often do we actually have to go in and clear out, brush, or anything, sediment, or anything of that nature?
You know, there's no set timetable. We have them on inspection rotation. It's just like roads, you know, some of them last forever, some of them need maintained chronically. You know, we have a couple of ponds where every, every eight or 10 years, we have to go in, clear out cactails, vegetation, silt, reshape the bottom of the pond.
And who does that?
There's some that we haven't touched in 30 years, and they still look pretty good.
And do we, we contract that work out, or do we?
We do, yeah.
Public works doesn't do it?
No, we're really not equipped to do it. And we're, well, like this year, you're looking at four ponds.
Five.
Five ponds, and you're looking at under $50,000 to look what you're looking at.
All right, I'll make a motion that we authorize the appropriate township officials to inspect the ponds they issue in, to come back to council with a recommendation as to their condition, whether we should accept them in their current condition.
I'll second that, and I am not going to recuse. I've told you I lived there, but I believe this is a bigger issue.
And we have a motion in the second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay.
Nay.
Five one, Mr. Lauer. Next item is our income tax appeal.
We had a, I heard income tax appeal filed for taxes owed between 2004, 2011. It was my determination that the penalty and interest should not be waived. There was certainly adequate notice of the obligation and opportunity to make, you know, to make payments in a timely fashion, so.
I move that we approve the decision, the recommendation on appeal 012019, and uphold the obligation of the taxpayer to pay penalty and interest on the outstanding balance.
Second. Motion in the second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. Six zero, Mr. Lauer. Next item is library summer hours.
Yes, so first I should tell you, this is library week, so everybody should know that. In fact, the reason why there's all the parking spots filled, it's a library program. The library has been open on Sundays for a number of years. And one of the things they're asking is to be able to go to summer hours where Sunday, the library will not be open on Sunday, starting on Mother's Day, as opposed to starting on Memorial Day. The reality is, you're really only losing one Sunday out of that, because there is nobody in the library on Mother's Day. And it's the following Sunday where you may have some, some people. But what they see occurring in the library is, as you're getting to the end of the school year, the amount of attendance drops on Sunday, so.
I'll make a motion that we approve the request to change in hours as for library.
I'll second. The motion is second. Any further discussion?
Could I ask a clarifying question? In the body of the docket, the library board recommends that we close for all the Sundays in May, which would mean the first Sunday of May on, which may or may not correlate to Mother's Day?
Actually, I talked to Myra about that, and that suggestion was only, had to do with the fact that somehow it would be easier to communicate. And Myra's okay with making this on Mother's Day. It is something that she feels comfortable with. I just think you don't want to move it so far back that kids who have schoolwork and papers and.
I was just asking because the recognition was different from them. All right, thank you.
And we have a motion in the second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. Six zero, Mr. Lauer. Next item is payroll and bills.
I reviewed the payroll and bills, find them in order, if they may be good.
I'll second. The motion is second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. Six zero, Mr. Lauer. Next item is correspondence. Any correspondence we need to discuss, Mr. Lauer?
No.
Let's move on to the minutes. Is there any member of council that has any questions or any comments with regard to any of the committee minutes? Hearing none, we'll move on to miscellaneous. Request for work after hours at Donaldson's Crossroad Shopping Center.
Donaldson's Crossroad Shopping Center is involved in a facade improvements that includes redoing some of their sidewalks. They'd like to be able to do that work at night, so they don't disrupt the businesses, and they don't create an unsafe condition for patrons. I think this is a reasonable request.
Well, since we let the gas company do it, I don't see how we can't let them not do it. So I'll make a motion that we approve the request by the owners of Donaldson's Crossroad Shopping Center to work after hours.
I'll second it. Seems like it's taking forever on that project.
Hopefully, working at night. I was going to say Rome wasn't built in a day, right? That's right.
Have a motion in the second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. Six zero, Mr. Lauer.
The one other thing under miscellaneous, I distributed a copy of the lease agreement between the township and Mr. Robinson concerning the piece of property where we have a stormwater facility on Valley Brook Road. This agreement's been worked out between their solicitor and Mr. Smith. I just, I think it's ready to be signed. I just wanted to make sure that council was okay with me executing this lease before.
Well, I looked it over before the meeting. I didn't have any issue with it, but.
I'm sorry, I would like to table until this meeting. I'm, I don't, getting an eight-page document, I'm not comfortable with that. I'd like to read it, and I'd like to have all the pages.
You do now have all the pages.
I see the work started. Apparently, that's you clearing the property.
He's clearing the property with our, with our permission.
Right.
All will make a motion that we table the lease agreement to the next council meeting. Second. Motion in the second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay.
Nay. I don't see why we can't do it right now. What's going to change? And it's a lease? We've talked about it a half a dozen times in here.
We did. I'm sorry, I disagree with you. I think, first of all, a 25-year lease with another 25 years. I'm sorry, I haven't read it. I had questions when I saw it.